Good morning, good morning, good morning. God bless you. We are so happy that you have joined us today. This is the day that the Lord has made. We will rejoice and be glad in it. Let us bow our heads this morning and let us be mindful that we are in Psalm 23. We will do Psalm 24 and 25 for today. I just want to say as we go into prayer, that for many children, they've begun school last week. Some are beginning school today. So we are going to be in prayer for our children, our parents, our teachers, our ministrators, because we know that these are trying times and school is different. There is no norm anymore. So as we are going to God in prayer this morning, we are going to be praying for all of our students, our teachers, our parents, because parents are making sacrifices right now to try to make this thing work while we are yet in this global pandemic. Let us pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we give you glory. We give you honor and we give you praise. Lord, we thank you for our children that have begun school last week and some that are beginning this week. Our college students that have begun weeks ago. God, we ask that you cover them with your blood. That you, Father God, give them a determined mind that they will want to, Father God, learn more of you, to worship you, to glorify you. And Father, that while they're doing online learning and while they're doing remote learning and all the different names that we have classified it, we ask that you bless the parents, God. Some are sacrificing having to leave jobs. Some of them are sacrificing, Lord, making arrangements. Some don't have anyone that they can go to to help them in this. So God, we ask in the name of Jesus that thou will be the guidance for these wonderful people, that you will lead them and guide them and direct them and give a wisdom, God, so that they will know how to help their children, so that the teacher, who some of them are parents themselves, that they can bless each other. Lord, we ask that your will be done in all of their lives. Now, God, we pray for those of us that are retired and some that are going to work, those that have listening ears. And God, even those that are on their beds of affliction who turn to men to hear the Bible study. God, we ask that you bless them in a mighty way. Thou art yet the potter. We are merely the clay, mold and make us, God, into what you would have us to be. We know that this will not last always. We know that you are God who is in control. And because of that, Father, we can say thank you. Thank you for what you've done thus far. Thank you for what you will continue to do in the lives of your people. It is in Jesus' name that we pray now with thanksgiving. And those who believe, join me and said, "Amen." Amen, amen. Today we are in this beautiful book that is called and referred to as "The Twenty-Third Psalm." This twenty-third psalm, it is the passage in the Bible that I believe it has dried more tears. I believe it comforted more hearts. I believe it healed more hurts. I believe it's been tuned in and turned to. It's been quoted. It's been memorized more than any other passage in the entire Bible. That is the twenty-third psalm. I remember when I was young, being in Sunday School, one of the things that they taught us was the twenty-third psalm. We learned that the Lord is our shepherd. And so as we begin to learn today and to look at this scripture, I think that we are going to find that people refer to this so much that it has been said that even soldiers on the battlefield and the lonely college student and the older or younger person that's lying on their bed of affliction, almost on a deathbed, can attest to the power of these words, can attest to the power of the encouragement that comes and the comfort from this twenty-third psalm. Let us look at it right now, this morning. Psalm 23, according to the King James Version. "The Lord is my shepherd; I shall not want. He maketh me to lie down in green pasture; He leadeth me beside the still waters; He restoreth my soul; He leadeth me in the paths of righteousness for His name's sake. Yea, though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I will fear no evil, for thou art with me. Thy rod and thy staff comfort me. Thou preparest a table before me in the presence of mine enemies; Thou anointest my head with oil; my cup runneth over. Surely goodness and mercy shall follow me all the days of my life, and I will dwell in the house of the Lord forever." This twenty-third psalm, when we read this psalm, I believe we can almost picture David, King David, now that he has gone through some trials and tribulations. I believe that King David is now reflecting back on the time when he was a young shepherd's boy. I believe he's remembering when that great big giant Goliath had to be conquered because of what he was doing to so many. David now sitting on a throne with riches and all of the luxuries of life, his mind goes back to him being that young shepherd's boy. And he began to say, "The Lord is my shepherd." When we look at the shepherd, we look at a person that is taking care of or monitoring or caring for his sheep. And the Lord does just that for each and every one of us. The Lord is our shepherd. He's our protector. He's our guardian. And what he does is take care of us. In our most difficult situation, God proves himself to be the great shepherd. And that's why sometimes we refer to pastors who minister and who take care, who are over their flock, which is called the sheep. We call them the under-shepherd because we recognize God as the head shepherd. Amen. So we say that he's our shepherd and we shall not want. We thought about, when you're thinking about a shepherd, I think King David was thinking about how he cares for his father's sheep. That David was reminded of how faithful God had been to him through so many situations. He remembered how God had provided for him and protected him from danger. Picking up his heart, David began to sing and to play the song of "The Lord is my shepherd; I shall not want." I want us to be reminded also that God had provided and taken care of David and his sheep and his household for such a long time. And I'm here to let you know that the word of God says that we are, in Psalm 100, we are his sheep, amen. And if we are his sheep, then we know that the Lord will take care of us. It doesn't matter the situation. It doesn't matter what the odds are stacked against you or for you. We have to have confidence today as believers in Jesus Christ that this God that we serve is able to keep us and to shelter us and to be our shepherding God. The Lord is our shepherd. He maketh us to lie down, not just anywhere, but in green pasture. He could have allowed us to lay some other places, but he chooses to let us lay down in green pasture. The green pastor is emphasizing that that's where we can eat and feed from because we cannot feed in empty places. He restoreth our soul. He leadeth us in the paths of righteousness for His name's sake. He reminds us that he is going to guide and lead us in the right path. And he will not lack or slack on what he does for us. He will be there for us even when it says to us that, "Yea, though I walk through the valleys of the shadows of death," as saying, "When things are getting rough for us, and we will have rough moments, whether it's through disease to our body, whether it's through some type of infirmity that we're going through, whether it's a hardship or a trial or tribulation, even though we walk through these valleys of the shadows of death." Look at the blessing here. We're still walking. The blessing is not that we are sitting in the valleys of the shadows of death. It says, "Hallelujah," that we're walking through, going through, meaning it won't last forever. That while we're going through, we will fear no evil, for thou art with me. The Lord is with me. His rod and his staff, because the rod and staff refers to the shepherd, the rod and the staff, that they will comfort us. "And thou preparest a table before us in the presence of our enemies." Hallelujah. That we don't have to wait for the battle to be over, that God will conquer some of our enemies right here and that in their presence, he's preparing a table for us. He anoints our head with oil, so much so until our cup overflows. And we say, "Surely goodness and mercy shall follow me all the days of my life, and I will dwell in the house of the Lord." I will not, what he's saying, because my cup is overflowing, I'm not going to lack satisfaction. I'm going to have this and that God's goodness and mercy because of his grace and mercy will follow me, not just on that day that I'm going through. Hallelujah, but all the days of my life. Because he is my shepherd, I will not want for anything. Amen. I will not want for anything. And all I have to do is stay in the house of the Lord forever and ever and ever. So even though we might not physically be able to come together right now, we still remain under his auspiciousness. We still remain with the Lord. Amen. That is what he is saying that we should do. When Jesus steps in and makes us up and looks at what we're doing, Jesus will always step in on his time and in his time to settle any situation. Amen. So he's our shepherd. Remember that each and every day. And this is a psalm because it's so widely known that we as believers should learn ourselves. We should take time out to read this every day. If you're just reading it every day, and I know some say, "Oh Pastor, I can't remember my mind. I'm older now. Things don't settle in." Let me tell you, yes, you can remember. Yes, you can. All you have to do is repeat it over and over. And the Lord will, because according to John 14 and 26, he says, "But the Comforter, which is the Holy Ghost, shall teach you all things and bring all things to your remembering whatsoever I have taught you." So please don't say you're beyond the years of remembering. God will bring it to your remembering. Psalm 24 says,[1000.96][1002.00]"The earth is the Lord's and the fullness thereof, the world and they that dwell therein; for he had founded it upon the seas and established it upon the flood. Who shall ascend into the hill of the Lord? Or who shall stand in his holy place? He that hath clean hands and a pure heart, who hath not lifted up his soul unto vanity, nor, it says, "Lifted up into vanity, nor sworn deceitfully; he shall receive the blessings from the Lord and righteousness from the God of his salvation." This is the generation of them that seek him, that seek thy faith, O Jacob, Silah. And then the word says, "Lift up your head, O ye gates, and be ye lifted up, ye everlasting doors, and the king of glory shall come in." Hallelujah. The king of glory shall come in. The question comes in, well, who is this king of glory? The Lord strong and mighty. The Lord mighty in battle. "Lift up your head, O ye gates; even lift them up, ye everlasting doors, and the king of glory shall come in." Again, verse 10 says, "Who is the king of glory?" The answer is, "The Lord of hosts." He is the king of glory, Silah. This is telling us in these verses 1 through 6 concerning the kingdom of Christ and the subjects of the kingdom. Then verses 7 through 10, it's concerning the king of that kingdom. When we ask them, they are downtrodden. They are feeling defended. Who knows, who's going to ascend into the hills or who's going to stand in his holy place? And it answers, and the key's here, the two things I need you to highlight in verses 4. It says that, "He that hath clean hands and a pure heart, who hath not lifted up his soul unto vanity, nor sworn deceitfully." We've got to have a clean heart. The word of God tells us, "Blessed are the pure in heart, for they shall see God." We must have clean hands. And it tells us that as we are reading. You see Psalm 24 is a song, it's a worship song. It's a song for many voices to sing together. The opening of lines declares who we worship and why we worship. It tells us that, "The earth is the Lord's and the fullness thereof, the world and they that dwell therein." It's giving us who we are to worship, who we are and where we are, and that the Lord has founded it upon the seas and he has established it upon the floods. And then we go on and we learn that we are going to receive the blessings in verse 5, the blessings from the Lord and the righteousness from the God of our salvation. And then it tells us in verse 6 that this is the generation of them that seek him, that seek his faith. We are to remember who we are and that we are serving this great Creator. He is the Creator of the heaven and the earth. God deserves our worship, for if no other reason than the fact that it is he that has made us and not we ourselves. So we're looking and it says, "Lift up your head." We know that there are days that we feel down and despondent. We feel rejected. We feel like there's no hope. But the Lord is saying, "Lift up your heads, O ye gates. Lift them up, ye everlasting doors, and the king of glory shall come in." Beloveds, lift up your heads, whatever you're going through. Lift them up, whatever your family, your children, your grandchildren are going through. We are to lift up our heads. Our jobs are to encourage. Our jobs are to inspire. Amen. So we do not stumble carelessly in the presence of God. We are to walk in that and to know and to encourage others to lift up your head. Amen. As we look now at Psalm 25. "Unto thee, O Lord, do I lift up my soul. O my God, I trust in thee. Let me not be ashamed. Let not mine enemies triumph over me. Yea, let none that wait on thee be ashamed. Let them be ashamed which transgress without cause. Show me thy ways, O Lord. Teach me thy path." Sometimes we have to ask the Lord just to teach us. We know that the Holy Spirit or the Holy Ghost is the teacher, but we have to act because it's God the Father, God the Son, and God the Holy Spirit. So, "Lord, teach me thy ways. Teach me thy path. Lead me," verse 5, "in thy truth. And teach me, for thou art the God of my salvation. On thee do I wait all the day. Remember, O Lord, thy tender mercy and thy loving kindness, for they have been ever of old. Remember not the sins of my youth, nor my transgressions. According to thy mercy, remember thou me for thy goodness' sake, O Lord." Here, verses 1 through 7, we're talking about the confidence in prayer. Now, with confidence in prayer. I'm confident because I'm asking God to show me his way. I'm confident because I'm asking God to teach me his way. I'm confident because I'm asking God to remember thy tender mercies and thy loving kindness. I'm confident because I'm asking God not to remember those things that I did in my youth, but see me now for goodness' sake. Verses 8 through 14. "Good and upright is the Lord; therefore will he teach sinners in the way; the meek will he guide in judgment, and the weak will he teach his way. All the paths of the Lord are mercy and truth, into such as keep his covenant and his testimonies for thy sake." For thy sake. And then it says to us, "O Lord, pardon mine iniquity, for it is great. What man is he that feareth the Lord? Him shall he reach in the way that he shall choose; his soul shall dwell at ease, and his seed shall inherit the earth." Verse 14. "The secret of the Lord is with them that fear him, and he will show them his covenant." Hallelujah. He will show him his covenant. We are all sinners, beloved. And Christ came into this world to save us, the sinners, to teach us, the sinners, to call us, the sinners, to repent him. So if we're writing down and remembering today, we are remembering when we read Psalm 25, verses 8 through 14, that Christ came into this world. Christ came into this world, number one, to save us, the sinners, to save us. Two, to teach us, the sinners, to teach us. And Christ came into this world, number three, to call us, the sinners, to repent it. And we know that when we repent, we ask God's forgiveness of our sins. The Bible says he's faithful and just to forgive us. We value a promise by the character of him that makes it. We therefore depend upon God's promises. Now let us look quickly as we continue, verses 15 to 22. It says, "Mine eyes are ever toward the Lord, for he shall pluck my feet out of the net. Turn thee unto me and have mercy upon me. I am desolate and afflicted; the troubles of my heart are enlarged. O bring thou me out of my distresses. Look upon my affliction and my pain and forgive all my sins. Consider my enemies, for they are many, and they hate me with cruel hatred. O keep my soul and deliver me. Let me not be ashamed, for I put my trust in thee. Let integrity and uprightness preserve me, for I wait on thee." Hallelujah. Redeem Israel, O God, out of all his troubles. This is saying to us today that the psalmist is now concluding, as he began, with expressing dependence upon God and desire toward him. There was a psalm out there that says, "I can depend. You can depend on God." When we realize where our help comes from, beloved. When we realize that we can trust and should trust in the Lord each and every day of our lives. When we realize that, then we will know that everything will be all right. It is good thus to hope and to quietly wait for the salvation of the Lord. And if God turns to us, no matter who turns from us, we know that if God is turning to us and, and we can turn toward him, everyone else becomes irrelevant. He pleased his own integrity, though guilty before God. Yet as to his enemies, he has the testimony of consciousness that he had done them no wrong. God would at length give Israel rest from all their enemies round about. In heaven, God's Israel will be perfectly redeemed from all troubles. Blessed Savior, thou hast graciously taught us that without thee we can do nothing. Someone once said, "Without him, our lives would be nothing." Without him, our lives would be like a ship without a sail. We need the Lord in our lives and we need to be able to lift him up with our whole heart. For he is the God of our salvation. He is our God out of all his troubles. This God that we need to turn to, as it said in verse ten sixteen, "Turn thee unto me and have mercy upon me." If God is with us, he is more than the world, amen? He is more than the world. And so we look today and as we have concluded, Psalm twenty-three, Psalm twenty-four, and Psalm twenty-five. Next week our assignment will be Psalm twenty-six, Psalm twenty-seven, and twenty-eight. But I wanna say this to you today. That Psalm twenty-third, or twenty-three, which is used universally, we should teach our children that song. We should teach our grandchildren that song. And if you have any great-grand, teach them, generation upon generation. We have lost the generation where the Bible teachings from families have not been as it should. Now is the opportunity. If you're a parent, grandparent, great-grandparent, or great-great, teach your children the Twenty Third Psalm so that if nothing else stays with them, it will remain with them all the days of their lives, that the Lord is their shepherd. And because he is their shepherd, they shall not want. May God bless you today. Do something to bless somebody. Could be a smile, could be a kind word. It could be because of, uh, uh, a distancing socially, could be an elbow rub, could be a thumbs up. But whatever you do, make sure that the sun does not go down over your rack, that you have not tried to bless somebody. God bless you and allow him to be your shepherd.